We will begin. Fantastic. Thank you. I would like to call to order the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting to order, and please remind everyone to mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or motion and second for an action item. All right. Thank you, everybody. I'll begin this evening by asking each commissioner to please respond with a "here" when I call their name. Commissioner Doan.
Here.
Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher. I see Commissioner Fisher. And then Commissioner Lysick.
Here.
Fantastic. All right. Well, we'll begin this evening by the reports from our CEO and management staff. Mr. Hickman, sir.
Well, thank you very much. And let's see here. I'm going to try to push my favorite button. Take control. All right. Okay, so some of you may have heard about this already, but the WWSP earmark, it is now officially through Congress. I'm very excited about this and incredibly appreciative Representative Bonamichi's staff for getting us this three million dollars. Just, you know, this was, this just is a significant lift to get this done and really do appreciate that. So, you know, we aren't done asking, to be clear. So, we currently have an ask right now of the Bureau of Reclamation for five million dollars for grant for AMI funding. So, and we'll be going back there also making some additional future requests here in the not-too-distant future. So, more to come on this, but this is a significant step in the right direction. February seventh work session, leadership team met this week as we do every week, and we were looking and we had to move some items around just because we weren't quite ready for them. And when we did, it left us with a single item for the February seventh work session, and that is just the WWSS Commission update. I, I think that is something we can cover at another time. That's actually in that, I believe, February seventh is just a few days after the actual WWSS meeting, normal meeting for Commissioner Duggan. So, it doesn't necessarily help him. So, ultimately, we're suggesting that we cancel this work session, but I want to make sure that the board is okay with that.
Works for me. Now, this is Jim Doan. It works for me.
Great.
There you go.
All right. That's what I needed. All right. Thank you very much. And then want to introduce our new district recorder, Sam Kaufman. So, Sam, there he is. Very excited to have him as the new district recorder. He's been deep into it this week already. And yesterday, he got to experience me eating too hot, too, too hot for my taste spicy Thai food. So, at lunch. So, I think I gave him a good introduction that way. So, he was like, wow, all right, this guy can't handle his Thai spice. So, but Sam, do you want to introduce yourself real quick and just say hi?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Tom, and members of the board. It's a pleasure to meet you, and I look forward to working with everybody, and I'm sure I'll see you all in person very shortly.
So, thank you and welcome aboard, Sam. And unless there's any questions for me, we are going to turn this over to Paul Matthews.
Well, thank you, Tom. So, I want to give you a quick safety moment this morning. It's going to be, or this evening, rather, it's going to be an unusual one. It's actually jump-starting automobile. And if you think about it, jump-starting automobile can be somewhat of a dangerous task. You have battery acid that can throw off hydrogen and oxygen. You have gasoline, you have sparks, you have energy. So, it is something that we all should take a little bit of time to, to consider. And as we enter the cold weather period, car batteries are more vulnerable, and they're often going to die during the cold weather. So, we can expect an increase in that. In fact, recently, I received a phone call from a family member who, with her sister, was trying to start a car and needed some remote coaching. We went through this, the process. It's often difficult to do, but jump, jump-starting car can be the best short-term solution to get you back underway if your car isn't functioning because of a bad battery. The National Safety Council has recommended procedures, and I'm going to cover those tonight to keep us all safe if we need to jump-start our car. So, a couple first general recommendations from the council. First position, another vehicle with a healthy battery close to your car, but not touching. And be sure both batteries are of the same voltage. Shouldn't be too difficult. Most of our batteries are 12 volts, but make sure that you have that. Read the owner's manual for both vehicles for special directions. And in fact, I learned, recent car I had, the battery was rather difficult to locate. It was in the trunk of the car rather than where the engine would be. It was a plug-in electric hybrid kind of car, and it was kind of an interesting to find that. Turn off the ignition of both vehicles. Set the parking brake. Place the automatic transmission park. If you have a standard trans, manual transmission, put it into neutral. Wear safety glasses and gloves while using the cables. Again, we're talking about chemicals, acid, we're talking about sharp objects, and we are in an automobile. So, here's the order of operations if you're connecting booster cables. First, follow the owner's manual to make sure it isn't different. You want to follow the owner's manual. Clamp or connect one end of the positive booster cable, and that's the red one, on the dead battery. And then the positive typically color red. Connect the other end of the same cable on the positive battery of the car that's functioning. Connect the second negative cable to the other post of the booster battery. The negative is usually the black one. And then finally, you make the final connection by connecting the black cable to the engine block of the stalled vehicle. You want to keep it away from the battery. Again, they can gas off and be hazard. So, get a good metal bite on the booster cable away from the, the, the battery itself. So, little bit of a quiz. What is wrong with this picture? When I just said? There's a Diet Coke in it for the first person that raises their hand and answers the question correctly.
Oh, I don't want a Diet Coke, but you don't, you don't connect both terminals simultaneously. Nor does he have on safety glasses.
No safety glasses.
His PPE is missing. We really, I agree with you, President Sanders, that he may be connecting both simultaneously. That's, I can't tell because it's on a motion picture, but he's not wearing his PPE. No goggles, no gloves, a no-go. So, with that, any other questions or comments about the safety moment?
He's got his hat facing forward.
That's a positive, right? With your direction, President Sanders, I'll move forward if we're ready for that. All right. So, we had a meeting in the Finance Committee. Actually, Commissioner Duggan recommended that we talk a little bit about the district's investment portfolio. Tonight in the consent agenda will be our investment policy, so we thought we could just talk through a little bit about our investment portfolio. I like to say that right now, our investment portfolio, portfolio is the single greatest asset the district has, that the amount of money we have in our investments, almost a hundred and ninety million dollars, is the most expensive asset that, that we have, single asset. And so, we want to manage it very carefully, and that's what those policies are about. We have our guiding principles that guide us in how we do our investments. They're presented here. Obviously, limited risk. We are not a hedge fund. We want return of investment over return on investment legality. Clark wants to make sure we stay on the right side of wrong there. Return liquidity is very important to us right now. As we are financing the WWSP, we need to make sure we have enough money to pay those contractors on time and to work with our partners to get the money there. And the safety of the, of the investments themselves, all taken together, those are our objectives. And so, as we put together, we need to balance our risk and return. The greatest risk that, that typically we have is, is what we call interest rate risk. And this is where the market values of our investments with longer maturities can change based on interest rates. So, as interest rates go up, and we hold a security that, let's say, pays three percent, and the prevailing interest rates are four and a half percent, if we go to market that security, people are going to pay us less for that, so they can earn a return equal to where the market is. That's what we call risk, our interest rate risk. We have that. We have no way of avoiding that. We buy securities over time based on the advice of our investment advisors, but nevertheless, interest rates will go up. The district has stayed relatively shorter in the market, meaning that we have relatively low duration in anticipation that interest rates will be going up. We generally hold our securities to maturity. That means that we don't typically sell a maturity and experience some sort of loss based on this change in interest rates because we hold them until maturity. We focus on our benchmark duration. This helps the district avoid the risk of trying to time the market. We aren't trying to time the market. We, we have our investment objectives. We're clear-eyed about that. Right now, what's dominating our thoughts, frankly, is liquidity, making sure that we have enough to pay for those program costs. I'm not going to talk about the investment policy too much. It's in the consent agenda. We are required to adopt it annually simply because we hold securities that exceed eighteen months. And you can look at the investment policy and ask me any questions that you might have about that. So, if we look at our, our portfolio, fluctuates from, from month to month, depending on where we are in our payment cycles. This is in the month in review. You see a graph very much like this in the month in review. Our investments that we call on this chart, you'll see two, two colors, the green and the blue. The green investments are what we call our liquid investment. Essentially, that is our investment in the LGIP, the Local Government Investment Pool, which we use to meet our, our cash, and we transfer that back and forth to our bank. The blue is what we call our core investments. Those are securities that we buy in accordance with the district's investment policy. So, some of them are some commercial paper, but most of them, frankly, are US Treasuries or agencies of the US government. So, what's our current approach? Interest rates have been going up. We have, as we talked about before, we took a large draw of our WIFIA, our WIFIA loan when interest rates reversed, and we said, wow, we can actually make some money. We're paying one point three five percent of the interest. We can earn four and a half or more on the investments. So, we took that large draw and have been managing this in a very short-term basis. The reason for the short-term focus, again, is to keep the liquidity available for the water supply program. So, we want to maintain sufficient liquidity at the LGIP as well as short-term treasuries and agencies, so those can be turned over and, and come back to the district. We monitor this on a weekly basis. We sit down with our finance team, and we actually look at where we are on a cash flow basis to make sure that we're making appropriate investments. And so, that's myself, our Financial Operations Manager, who brings information from the program, what those spins are, as well as our AP, our controller, and our Senior Management Analyst, Joe Healy, who manages our overall approach. So, we take this very seriously to make sure that we have enough liquidity at the system. We're at an interesting stage of the economic cycle. We have what's called an inverted yield curve, which is a technical term that essentially means typically the blue curve that you see at the bottom is more typical, where investments of a shorter duration earn you lower return than investments of longer duration. When you have an inverted yield curve, the short-term investments are yielding more than long-term investments. That actually has some advantages to the district right now because liquidity is an important element for us. So, here are the implications that yield curve. First, there's little cost of us maintaining that shorter maturity. So, we're buying things out four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks, and we're getting sufficient liquidity, but we're still earning a nice return. The inverted yield curve is the classic leading indicator of an upcoming recession, so that is of a concern. We don't know if there is going to be a recession. Recently, read an article that sixty-one percent of economists are forecasting a recession during this year. I think it's probable. The real question is the duration and severity of the recession, which, which nobody gives us those notes in advance. We'll have to learn and live through that period. Longer-term interest rates are higher than before, but we aren't seeing that, that large shift. And that's because what we're seeing terms, short-term interest rates are largely Fed policy oriented towards trying to deal with the inflation that we've seen recently. So, some of the securities that we purchased before the run-up in interest rates, we will have what's, what we described as an unrealized loss on those. We'll hold those to maturity, and we won't actually experience a loss on those. But if you look at our financial reports, you'll see an unrealized loss on those investments. So, with that, I ask, answering any questions that you might have about our investment portfolio and how we manage that, or allow you to get on with the balance of your meeting.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Welcome to two thousand and twenty-three, by the way. That being it for the reports, the next item will be our Commissioner Communications and Reports of Meetings Attended. And we'll begin this evening with Commissioner Doan.
Great. Great. I'm unmuted now. Okay. On the fifth, I talked to the assembled employees about our visioning, and I think it went over pretty well. And on the, on the thirteenth, Joint Water Commission, Barney Joint Operating Commission. And last night was the Rate Advisory Committee, I think it was the third meeting, and then tonight's meeting. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Duggan.
On the tenth, I attended, early in the morning, our regular agenda planning meeting with President Sanders and CEO Hickman. Also, that day, I attended our Finance Committee meeting where Commissioner Lysick and I reviewed the applicant pool for filling the vacant Budget Committee position, and that's on tonight's agenda. On the eleventh, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Executive Committee meeting, where we got some good news that the preliminary numbers from the city of Portland's budget process appear to generate only about a five and a half percent increase in dues. A year ago at this time, considering the, the year-to-year carryover and other employment projected numbers and inflation, we were really worried a year ago that we were going to be facing a much higher number than just the five and a half percent. And that includes some shifting of priorities and then the general contingency. But again, five and a half percent increase in dues, considering all that the consortium does and is planning on doing with the strategic plan update and other initiatives, it's fantastic news that we're only looking at five and a half percent potentially increase. If that changes, we should know in the next six to eight weeks, but right now, things are on track for a relatively modest increase in dues considering the inflationary environment. Last night, attended the, the RAC meeting and then tonight's meeting. That's it so far for this month.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Fisher.
Evening, everyone. Well, like many of you, I attended the unveiling of the visioning to the staff and heard Commissioner Doan's remarks and Representative Ken Helm's remarks and our other guests on the fifth. Last night, I also attended the RAC meeting, which I thought had a, had a very interesting discussion point at one point in the meeting. And I was very glad Tom was there and sort of the discussion could have gone off the rails at, at one point, but thankfully, we were all like-minded group of folks in the room looking to do good. So, it was just mostly a philosophical discussion that occurred. And I'm here at tonight's meeting. And then tomorrow night, I'm attending the Westside Economic Alliance's Legislative Reception in Wilsonville, where we're going to hear from the Washington County Legislative Delegation about the upcoming session, or the session technically that they're in right now.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Lysick.
All right. I think everything's already been touched on, so I'll go rather quickly. The visioning event on the fifth, the Finance Committee that Commissioner Duggan alluded to on the tenth, my first BRJOC and Joint Water Commission meetings on the thirteenth, and then this evening's board meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner Lysick. And then for myself, I think, like many of you, it's kind of a light series of meetings over the holidays to now. I was at the Joint Water Commission Barney Reservoir meeting, where we kind of got some insight into what had happened up at the Barney Reservoir. I had a meeting with Tom where we continued to talk about legislative outreach and marketing. Looks like I volunteered to fly out to Washington, DC over spring break and do some lobbying. I don't know what makes me think these are good ideas, but I will be going to DC with Tom to fly in for that down the road and have a bunch of meetings set up in the near future, again, with CFM, as we prepare for Oregon's legislature, legislature to start getting down to work in the very near future. So, yeah, kind of a very light schedule for me this, this month, which was welcome because I've had some, a few months where it was almost daily. So, I really liked less versus more. All right. That being said, we'll move on to our next item, which is topics to be raised by commissioners. And I'll just see if any commissioners have any topics to be raised at this time. All right. Applying the Dave Craska Rule, we've reached our time limit, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our public comment. Public comment is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters that are not on the agenda. Additional public comments will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment this evening? I hadn't heard if there was anyone coming. So, with that, we will move on to our business schedule this evening. Item number one is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we are here to approve the December twenty-two, let me say that again, please, the December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting minutes and to adopt Resolution zero-one dash twenty-three, a resolution adopting the investment policy for the Tewalton Valley Water District. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Jim Doan. So moved.
And this is Carl Fisher. I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Fantastic. Thank you. The business passes. Don't we have, don't we have a new district recorder?
I'm the acting district recorder for this meeting.
Okay. Is Sam too shy to, to take up the, the reins?
I didn't want to scare him away on day two.
That's probably very kind of you, Debbie. I did expect to hear a different voice, though. So, I had to step back for a second. All right. On item number two is our business agenda. Item A is acting as the local contract review board, which is what we are. We are to consider adopting Resolution zero-two dash twenty-three, a resolution declaring an exemption from competitive bidding for the one hundred and eighty-ninth pump station and pipeline project and authorizing a progressive design-build contract. And we will hear from, I have on my script Pete Boone and Nick Augustus, but it looks like Nick's name is on the dais. So, we will, I think, begin with Nick.
All right. Thank you, President Sanders, and good evening, members of the, the board. It's my pleasure to present tonight the one eighty-ninth Pump Station Pipeline Project for approval for an exemption to bidding for alternative delivery. See if this works. All right. So, just a brief outline of, of what I plan to discuss tonight. I'll do a quick background on the one eighty, one eighty-ninth Pump Station Project, talk a little bit about the options that, that we considered for replacement of this pump station. Talk a little bit about alternative delivery and some of the, the advantages we have by utilizing alternative delivery and then present this for board action. So, the one eighty-ninth pump station sits in the Cooper Mountain area of our district, kind of the southern end. You can see on the, on the right, there's a couple of stars there. It's south of Farmington Road on one eighty-ninth Avenue, and it was constructed in the late nineteen eighties. On the existing site, there's a well. There's also a two-million-gallon reservoir that sits at three fifty elevation. And recently, we've had some, some pump failures and some resilience issues with one eighty-ninth. This is the current sole feed to the top of Cooper Mountain. So, it's, it's pretty important to supply water to those residents that, that live in the Cooper Mountain area. In fact, we had a pump fail just this past summer while we were doing our, our pre-design work, early on in July, which obviously July is, is not a good time for pumps to fail. So, we were able to get that pump repaired in, in quick order, and, and no one lost, no one went without water at that time. But it's pretty important for, for the supply in that system. But currently, one eighty-ninth pump station pumps to our Goyack Pump Station, which was constructed in nineteen seventy-three and expanded in nineteen ninety-two. And that pump station has some issues with And that pump station has some issues with water intrusion that we just haven't been able to fix. It sits below grade and in a confined space. And so it's really not optimal working conditions for our operators that have to to go in there on a regular basis. And we also did some some engineering analysis and and looked at the seismic resilience and and there are some upgrades that we would really want to accomplish with that pump station. On that same site with Goyac also sits a reservoir. And that reservoir has some issues with the drain and and also is is requiring a seismic upgrade. And so we we took a look at at these systems and and this is kind of an overview schematic of of the the system there in Cooper Mountain. We have water. See, I would have a highlighter or laser pointer if I could, but I can't seem to find it here. Oh. Here we go. All right, so we intake water, water comes up to the one eighty ninth reservoir. And from there currently gets pumped to Goyac. And from there up to Cooper Mountain, and then we also have a pump up on Cooper Mountain that supplies the very top of the hill. And in looking at our pre design, there's a couple of things that that we wanted to do is you can tell one eighty ninth sits a little bit lower than our other major storage in the three eighty five zone and and so it has been offline now for I believe, two years since it it really doesn't give us beneficial storage, so. With this project, and let me turn the pointer off if I can. Oh, maybe not. There you go. Oh. Okay, so with this project, we plan to get rid of the one eighty nine eighty ninth reservoir. And after doing some analysis, it appears to be most beneficial to construct a single pump station with a new discharge pipeline that pumps up past Goyac Pump Station and completely remove the the Goyac Reservoir and Pump Station. And there's there's some major benefits to that. And not just cost, but looking into the future with maintenance and there's some value in only having to maintain one one pump station. So as we looked at various replacement options, it's kind of hard to see from this graphic, but this is this is an aerial view of our Goyac site with the reservoir right here and the pump station tucked right in here. It's really hard to see. And then we've got a portable generator and and this this aerial view really doesn't doesn't give it justice because this site is very steep. This driveway coming up is is a very steep driveway. And so trying to do construction on that site can be very challenging. And we looked at different options to to get rid of the confined space and and accomplish our goals and and it was it was just going to be really challenging to to do that on that existing site. And then this the schematic on the on the right is an option we evaluated at at one eighty ninth. Of potentially removing the shell of that existing reservoir and placing the pump station within that shell and as we evaluated these options, it it appeared that we would gain some additional benefits from bringing a contractor onboard early in the process and helping us decide what what makes the most sense on both of these sites as far as removal of of the reservoirs, demolition, construction. We wanted to make sure that that these facilities remain online the entire time until we're ready to ready to pump to the top of the hill, so. For those reasons, it it was important to to us to look to some alternative delivery methods. And I just wanted to cover a couple of methods that we looked at. I think several of you have probably seen this this before. We've we've done a one, we've done a few of these now. But just as a reminder, there's a couple of alternatives to consider. The normal design bid build is is our kind of our standard delivery method. It's there's separate selections for the designer and contractor. There's low bid construction and usually it's the longest schedule. We can't start ordering parts and and until we we get a contractor onboard and and it it just takes some time. So these these two alternative alternatives, one is CMGC. There are some advantages to this. It allows us to do separate selections as well for designer and contractor. We have price negotiations with contractor once the design gets completed, but we do add some schedule savings by bringing the contractor onboard early. They're involved throughout the design. They can offer their input throughout the design and and we're actually working on two projects right now that are that are that have utilized the CMGC method. The next one is design build. And this one is a single selection for the design build team. So a team of contractor and designer will propose on this and and upfront, they'll give us a lump sum price. And there are some major schedule savings there. Allows for a lot of innovation, but you have to have the the RFP documents have has to be laid out such that you you get everything you want. Laid out right in the in the RFP, so. The final method that that we looked at is the progressive design build. So similar to design build, it's a single selection, so we'll be selecting a contractor designer team. Which does allow it to have some schedule savings by bringing the the contractor onboard early. They can help phase the project if need be. It's been with the market as it is now, ordering materials and and being on top of of that right now is is really important. We need somewhere between six and eight months for pipes and and valves and and so having a contractor onboard early is we saw that as a as a good advantage. Schedule savings is one of the things we're really looking for. We really don't want to go more than another two summers at the most with the existing pump station. Just because of the the concerns we have with the condition of the of the pumps and the electrical gear within that existing pump station. Design, progressive design build allows us to utilize different bid packages. Allows for owner input along the way. And we were able to negotiate the guaranteed maximum price towards the end of the design phase. And we took a look at all four of these alternative delivery methods, including design bid build, and and we ranked them based on a few things that shown on the screen, so owner control, being able to allow our operators input in into the design. Allow contractor input and allow some some back and forth with the contractor, which which will help save on cost and helps place the risk to the entity most that that can better handle that particular risk. And then I mentioned schedule. Working together throughout the design and and construction so that we can hit the schedule that we would like to. So these are the results that we had. I mentioned working around the existing facilities. Keeping owner control throughout the design and and the phasing process. And really maximizing the the efficiency of the delivery process by by working together. Coming together as a collaborative team with the the design builder really helps to mitigate issues that could arise later in the project. And both the this method, we believe that we will still have highly qualified bidders based both on qualifications and cost. We do have the initial design costs in in the initial proposal. And then we're able to negotiate based on an open book evaluation of their guaranteed maximum price. And then we're able to appropriate risk allocation throughout the process, so. That takes us to how do we go about alternative project delivery? It is allowed under ORS two seventy nine C point three three five. There are competitive bidding exemptions. We actually advertised in December, sent out a solicitation of interest to the community to gauge interest in this type of delivery and we had nine firms respond. And we do have some recent experience in progressive design build. This is actually the first alternative delivery method that we brought to the board in twenty sixteen with the Grabhorn Reservoir Replacement Project. And I managed the the project in the in the early part of it. Turned out to be an excellent collaborative effort between us, TBWD and the design build team. We hired Wes Yost as the owner's representative for helping to deliver the one eighty ninth project. They were actually the owner's rep back in twenty sixteen for the Grabhorn Project as well. And then we plan to use in house counsel for legal assistance on this project. So I know a lot of information regarding this this project. There's a lot, but I guess are there any questions up to this point? Right, that takes me to my last slide. Oh, maybe there's a question.
I was just going to mention it. I really like these progressive approaches that save money and time and staff angst. So anyway, congratulations.
Thanks, appreciate it. So I believe President Sanders, I believe this goes back to you.
Great, thank you, Nick. Following your recommendation, I would like to ask for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution that zero two dash twenty three. A resolution declaring an exemption from competitive building bidding on the hundred and eighty ninth pump station and pipeline project and authorizing a progressive design build contract.
This is Commissioner Duggan, so moved.
This is Commissioner Lysick, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Thank you, Commissioner Lysick. I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Down?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Fantastic. The motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Item B this evening on our agenda is to consider the Finance Committee recommendations. Approving the following appointments and the appointment, following, I'm sorry, the following reappointments and the appointment of the District Budget Committee. Paul, I believe you're going to take the lead on this, please.
That's right, President Sanders. Good evening, President Sanders and Commissioners. A routine housekeeping item here, just as the investment policy was, but we need to have a budget committee appointed. And I just want to highlight where we are. We met with the Finance Committee. Our current appointments, as you can see, we have three budget committee members whose term is expiring this month. We've asked all three of them if they wish to be reappointed and working with Finance Committee. The Finance Committee recommended that we do that. In fact, all three did ask to be reappointed. These have been great budget committee members in the past. They have continuity, understanding. Water supply system project and and what we're doing and have just been valuable budget committee members. With the promotion or promotion, the change, I guess, of Commissioner Fisher from being a budget committee member to a member of the Board of Commissioners recently, that left a vacancy, and so we had one vacancy to fill. Based on the recommendation of the Budget Committee, we checked with, and I'm going to need help pronouncing Carlos's last name. Per toner, Paratoner, maybe somebody has a more nimble tongue than I can pronounce that. He was one of the one of the volunteers considered for the open board position when Commissioner Bagnall resigned from the board. And the Budget Committee deliberate, Finance Committee rather, deliberated on that and recommended that he be asked to participate. Glad to report that Tom Hickman contacted and Mr. Paratoner agreed to serve on the Budget Committee, so that's the basis of this recommendation right now. So with that, the Finance Committee recommends, and by motion you can do this, to approve the following reappointments and appointments of the District's Budget Committee. And they're listed here, so with that, entertain the next action of the board.
Great, thank you. Just one clarification. I don't know if I missed something, but Mr. Whiteley's name has been on a couple of the slides, but not on this slide.
Yes, Mr. Whiteley's term expires in twenty fifteen. So he's not up for reappointment. However, I did speak twenty twenty five. Wow.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Twenty twenty five. You know, it's funny, people are always in the wrong year. We're working on the audit for the prior year. I don't know what year it is, but in any event, yeah, he will be up and and he I did verify that he is still interested. Didn't filling out the remainder of his term, and he is a great asset to us. A professional engineer in the water business, works for the City Gresham, so we're honored to have him on our team as well.
Marvelous. Thank you for the clarification, Paul. All right, with that, then, following the recommendation by our chief financial officer, we will consider the Finance Committee recommendations approving the following appointments, reappointments and the appointments of the District Budget Committee. Mr. Craig Hopkins, who will be a reappointment. Mr. John Velodrowski, which will be a reappointment. Ms. Marilyn McWilliams, which will be a reappointment. And Mr. Carlo Paratoner, which will be an initial appointment through Jul- January of twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the Budget Committee reappointments and the appointment as listed on the agenda?
This is Jim Dawn, so moved.
This is Commissioner Fisher, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Doug, Commissioner Down and Commissioner Fisher. Can I ask our district recorder to please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Down?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Our third item on the agenda this evening is an informal presentation. This will be prevent presented from Kylie Bayer, Tom Hickman and Andrew Carlstrom. And it will be addressing our personnel policy and the hours of operations as we will hear. The current work schedule is, I believe, starting at seven AM. And Kylie, Andrew and maybe Tom, some are going to address that for us at this time. So Kylie, please take it away, or Andrew, I'm sorry.
So I'm just going to start it off here that this came through as a request just to, you know, hey, with from one of the board members was interested in understand a little more about our hours of operation and how our policies in terms of some of the new flex work, you know, how does that align with the hours of operation? How would we consider changing of our hours of operation? And if so, what would drive that? So with that, I've asked both Kylie and Andrew. to take a look at these things and they're going to present some information on this tonight. And and then we can answer questions. So I think Kylie, you're starting.
I believe I have the first slide, Tom.
Wow, we're all we're all messed up here. All right, Andrew.
Yep. Next slide, whomever has the I guess I'll just take control. Just give me a second here. All right, so I've got the first slide, talk about customer service hours of operations. So good evening, President Sanders and Board of Commissioners. As a reminder, the customer service department is charged with having a presence in the front lobby at TVWD to both receive and work with customers. The the public lobby hours are currently Monday through Friday, eight to four, eight AM to 4:00 PM. And understanding customer needs obviously never ends. And one area of inquiry currently is the lobby hours for customers. We're in the process of collecting data to better understanding, better understand our customers' needs, including informal surveys of customers who do visit the office. And we'll use this information to help determine if we need to adjust the hours of operation to address both customer and business needs. And I I do want to mention also that beyond the lobby question, another another area of continued inquiry are payment channels. In other words, what are our customers' preferred ways of making payments? But I definitely like to thank the board for their interest in TVWD's customers and customer operations. I'm going to turn this over to Kylie for the next slide. Kylie?
Let me click take control, which is the thing I'm really good at doing here. All right, so I'd like to speak with the board just a little bit about our shift schedules and flexible work options. I'm not sure if all of the board members are familiar with the shift schedules that nearly every employee at TVWD works. Most of us work what's known as a 980 schedule, where we work 80 hours over a nine day period in a two week pay period. So most employees are working nine hours a day, Monday through Thursday. They work an eight hour day on a Friday, and then they have their other Friday off. Speaking from experience, this is the best schedule that I've ever worked. And I think it does wonders for us in attracting folks to our organization and retaining them because those three day weekends are lovely. So nearly every employee works this schedule and most of them are working a 7:00 AM to a 4:30 PM shift. Some start a little bit later, some stick around a little bit later, but most people are doing that seven to 4:30. I don't usually get here at seven, I'm more of an eight o'clock starter than I hang back a little late. It's a bit early in the morning. And we also have some employees who are working in 5:8, so they'll work a standard eight a like eight to five shift Monday through Friday. We also have, I think, one or maybe two employees working 4:10s where they would work four 10 hour shifts and have their Fridays off. So if you do come into the office on a Friday, it will feel a little quiet because half of our people are not working. But that's because they're put in an extra hour all those other days to make up for it. We also offer remote work and hybrid remote and in-office work. And I'll direct you back to your packet. Page 71 is where you'll see the staff report about this. And we've included our flexible work options policy if you'd like to dive into that. We were all thrust into remote work during the COVID-19 pandemic. Some organizations have chosen to embrace that and maintain some remote work options. Others have been asking people to come back into the office. We look at this as it's a benefit for employees. It's a way to attract talent and to retain talent. So we wanted to continue offering remote work for positions that it makes sense. So people in positions that can be remote often are doing that. Some are remote nearly every shift. Some of our IT positions are more like that. Others kind of flex it during the week and do a couple of days remote and a couple of days in the office. And then employees in positions where they have a face-to-face customer interaction requirement or they need to use equipment that we only have here are working in the office. If you want to read that full policy, you're welcome to do so, but it's seems to have been running just fine. And our employees seem to be pretty pleased with it. We haven't noticed any reduction in productivity or efficiency as this policy was kind of reenacted this last November. I'd also like to speak with the board, give you an update on a new requirement that we'll have starting in September. So family medical leave is something you may be familiar with. Most employers in Oregon participate with FMLA and OFLA. Those are the federal and the state leave laws. People are eligible for those, employees are eligible for those kinds of leave depending on a couple of different factors. And it varies by the different laws. But in general, most employees would be eligible to take up to 12 weeks of unpaid leave for a serious health condition for one of their family members or for themselves. And that's in a 12 month period. We've been in compliance with that law for many, many, many years now. And we run that program in-house here at the organization. We have about 10 to 15 leave requests each year. And it varies. Sometimes those are, you know, brief stints where someone just needs to recover from a surgery. They could be longer for a parental leave, or they could be intermittent for someone with like a chronic health condition or who might be going through an illness where they have regular treatments and need to take intermittent leave. Those leave laws are not changing. But we have a new leave law requirement through the state of Oregon that will take place this September requiring nearly every employer in Oregon, there are very few exceptions to not comply with this. But nearly every employer in Oregon will be required to offer a paid family leave option starting in September. And so like I said, the family leave that we've been offering is considered unpaid. Employees have been using their leave accruals to supplement their hours for those leave periods of time so that they can meet their salary expectations. But they're using sick leave or vacation leave or comp time that they've already accrued. This will be a separate form of leave that the employee does not need to pay into or accrue to use. So it will be available for use starting in September. To come into compliance with this new requirement, employers can participate in the state of Oregon's plan. They can also submit an equivalent plan to manage those requirements in-house or through a third party insurance provider. Our HR team reviewed these three options and determined that our best option, thinking about what would be best for our employees and the easiest way to manage would be to run it in-house and do it ourselves. Like I said, we only have about 10 to 15 leave requests each year. It's very manageable for our HR team to review those and to either approve or deny them. So we've opted to do this in-house. This is also going to be a benefit for employees because if we were participating in the state of Oregon's plan, an employee who's going through a serious health condition would then need to apply for their leave with the state and hope that the state has sufficient funds to pay for the leave and that their approval happens in a timely manner. And I'm not saying that the state of Oregon can't or won't do that. But we're confident that we will be able to do it quickly, efficiently and really have our employees' best interests in mind. So right now we're drafting our equivalent plan to submit to the state. We're updating our leave policies to also submit those for review. And we'll be sending those to outside legal counsel shortly. We'd send them to Clark, but employment law is not his bag. So we're going to send it to someone else for their review. Want to let the board know there's no direct costs associated with this, although we do. We will be paying the leave, our payroll costs will still be the same as if the employee is working. So it's not an increased cost, though we might see increase in absences because this leave will be available to more people than the existing OFLA and FMLA leave laws are. So that's a little bit of an update for you all on family medical and safe leave. As we hear the status of our equivalent plan, I'll be sure to share that with the board and let you know when we are approved because we're confident that it'll be approved. And then we'll roll this out in September at the latest, ideally a little bit earlier if we can get everything set up and in place. And I'm happy to answer answer any questions that the board has about this.
This is Jim Don. I presume that our policies will be more employee favored than the state policies.
Yeah.
Is that a correct assumption?
That is a correct assumption. One of the ways that they will be more beneficial to employees is that participation in the state's plan includes a cost share between the employee and the employer. It's a percentage of 1% of each employee's salary. So employees would submit a bit of 1% and then the employer would submit the rest. And that would go all into a big fund at the state and they would use that to pay out the leave for those who requested across the state, the whole thing. It's like one big account it all goes into. With this program being done fully in-house, we don't need to do that. We will just kind of create a new leave accrual bucket, fill it up with 12 weeks every year and use that if needed, avoiding that kind of overhead cost on employees and us as an employer. Commissioner Duggan?
Yes, I just had a brief question. You you mentioned that there is going to be an expansion of categories of eligibility. And I'm curious, it it really, from what I remember in reviewing the list, and it shouldn't be amount to that much of of a larger pool of of eligibility there. What what were the main difference between what exists previously and what will exist once this all goes into effect? I just just want to refresh my memory on. I didn't think it was going to be that big of a deal. It just seemed to make things more fair. But could you refresh my memory on that, please?
Yeah, so it's definitely, it's a little bit different than the FMLA and OFLA requirements. For either of those leave programs, employees either need to be employed for one entire year or for six months. With this program with us, they're going to be eligible the day they're hired. We're not going to have a waiting period, we're just going to get it started for people. So that's one of the really big differences. Another difference is the relationships that could qualify for like a family member. Under FMLA and OFLA, there's a list of all of those relationships that that would qualify. It's generally spouse, parent, children, grandparents, et cetera, direct family members. Under this new leave program, it's just about anybody. It's it's even people who you have a family-like relationship with. So it'll be a lot more broad, which opens up a lot of opportunities for people in caregiving situations with more distant relatives or just chosen family that they're much closer to. So this will be a really nice benefit for employees who wouldn't typically qualify for the FMLA or those OFLA protections.
Perfect, thank you for refreshing my memory. I it sounds a lot more fair, especially the the waiting period. That really, really seemed something that always bothered me because you're you're one month into a job and then you have something really terrible happen. And not to have insurance against that is is could be devastating. So I think that that's great and hopefully won't create that much of an additional burden for us, but will be a lifesaver for maybe that one or two unique employees that that run into that circumstance. So that's great, thank you.
Yeah, definitely. This is it's a really progressive law in Oregon. I'm not surprised Oregon was the one of the first states to adopt this. But Commissioner Duggan, I think you hit the nail on the head. This is going to change people's lives. There's been so many instances where a parent will have a baby during the year and use up all of their leave accruals to take a few months off to bond with their baby. And then they come back and kids get sick. And they don't have any leave left on the books and they really struggle with how to make that work. This is going to take that stress away so that people can focus on their families and themselves and be ready to come back to work and not worried about not having enough leave balances to cover those instances. Okay, well, if any of you have any other questions, feel free to email me. And I can also come back and give another update when we get our equivalent plans submitted and approved. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kylie. If that is it for informational presentation, which I do believe it is, our final slide this evening will say it all. There you go. There being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.